Members and welcome to the December 2022 meeting of the Danvers School Committee. We will begin with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Constitution, founded under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. I'm going to read the Danvers Public Schools' mission statement. The Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect responsibility, creativity, in the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. This meeting is being broadcast on Danvers Community Access Television. Is anyone else in the audience recording the proceedings? Marsha Zubrick is recording the proceedings. All right, with that, we can get right into our agenda of items of interest to the superintendent, school committee, and community.
All right, I have two items of interest for you this evening. The first one is on Thursday, December 1st, we hosted the last session of the Danvers, Town of Danvers Citizens Academy, and we had 17 citizens participate, and we gave them an overview of our school district and how the district works. We went over the budget, we went over strategic planning and how we set our goals. We went into the three goals for the school year and gave them experiences in the science of reading at the elementary level, the safe and supportive schools at the middle and high school level. And so we had a great experience, and I thank the people that came and participated.
Great, thank you.
And then the second thing is, on the same day, in the late afternoon, early evening, we had representatives from Danvers High School attend the Earthshot Student Town Hall. So there was a lot of hoopla around the Earthshot Prize, and actually, our student rep was in attendance at that meeting, so I'll let her fill you in when she gives her report.
Great.
We're honored to have, I think we had like 15 students about, or 20 students attend that session. So I was proud that we were able to participate, and we thank Janelle Ridley, who you'll see a little bit later, and with the Danvers High presentation, she was able to organize that for us.
Great, thank you. Items of interest from the school committee. All right, we have, we are lucky enough to have with us tonight Mike Landers, who is our representative to the Vocational Technical Schools, School Committee, and Mike is here to give us an update on what's happening on that end.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to come, to come here tonight to talk with you folks about my experience so far. I've been to, I believe it's five meetings so far of our school committee at the Essex North Shore Voc Technical Agricultural School. It's been a, it's been an interesting five meetings, I will say that. I am on the Personnel Subcommittee, the way that we do it up there, because it's a much, obviously there's, there's 21 members on the school committee up there. And so we have subcommittees for various particular areas. Those subcommittees will meet regularly before the meeting, which is 5:00 PM. Our meeting's at 5:30 up there, a little earlier. But, and then we'll go through those, and that, those committees, subcommittees will all make recommendations in each, in each, each monthly meeting in regards to those areas that they're, you know, fall under their purview. The five biggest sending districts, which are, which are ours, PBD, Salem, Beverly, Gloucester, as well as Marblehead, all serve on an admission subcommittee, which is a special committee that was set up. Their work was done predominantly in the summer, so I did not have the opportunity to sit on any of those meetings. So unfortunately, we as a community were not represented during that, that process during the summer because, because of Wayne's passing. But going forward next year, in regards to sort of points of interest that, that you folks might be interested in, well, again, I've had the opportunity as well. I know we talked about me talking with Gabe, and Gabe and I have spoken a few times after our meetings and sort of discussed some of the stuff. Probably the thing that you would find most interesting is, is at this point right now, as of today, I believe approximately 50% of our eighth graders have applied for admission to the, to the school up there. Based on that, based on some past information, of course, the admissions process up there is competitive, so there's no guarantee of how many students are going to get in from one area or another. But based on past practice, my expectation would be that we would see somewhere between 60 and 70 students from, from Danvers up there going into next year's class, which I think is a, is a slight increase from what we've had the last couple of years, but we've seen sort of incremental increases anyway, so that should not come as a surprise, I think, to anybody. In terms of my efforts to deal with, I'll take my, my Essex Voc Tech School Committee hat off, and I'll put on my, my Danvers Finance Committee hat. And I can tell you, as I think you know, we, the town have been concerned about the increasing budget hit that we take every year as a result of the assessments. I have had the opportunity to have discussions with individual members within the school board, as well as discussions with the administration. It would not be fair to say that we come, we see eye to eye on many of the issues that, that we deal with on that, but I think that we have agreed that there's a need to try to reach areas of consensus first. And one of the areas I think that we do have consensus on, and that there is a, a real effort up there to do is to try to minimize the cost per student that will be assessed upon the sending communities. And so, not that they have a lot of control, that we have a lot of control over that, but the budgeting up at the, at the Voc Tech is, is, is different than what we do here municipally. There's a lot of similarities, but there are some differences, and one of those differences in terms of, is the funding mechanisms. And so there, there are ways and efforts that can be made to try to, to, to at least lessen the individual student blow. And so that's an area where, where I'm working with them, as well as the administration's working, and I think it benefits all the sending communities, obviously, as well. You've probably seen in the newspapers that, that the, there is a contract negotiation situation going on up there. That is, is ongoing. Obviously, that contract, which they, that we did settle with our ASME Non-teachers Union earlier, I believe that the first year on that was a 2% increase, going to a two and a quarter and a two and a half over the course of three years. We have not reached any type of a consensus with the teachers' union at this point, and that is an ongoing issue. And it's been made clear, obviously, by both me and other members of the school committee up there, that, that is the most significant portion of our budget, and that, obviously, all of the sending communities are concerned about what happens up there for two reasons. One is, obviously, it's going to impact us directly via the assessment, but also it sets some levels that may flow through to other sending school districts. And, and I will say that the administration understands that and has been supportive of that conceptually. So other than that, I'd love to ask, answer any questions that anyone might have about what's going on up there that I, that I can, so.
Questions from anyone on the school?
Yeah, Mike, how much does the cost per student for us to send, roughly?
Yeah, I, you know what, I'd have to look back at the thing. I, it's, it's less, it's less than what we spend
Per pupil.
Per pupil, but there's, there's some problems in terms of that. It's not an apples-to-apples
Okay.
comparison, in large part because they don't have a sizable component of, of out-of-district placements, obviously, which impact that cost per student. So when you start, when you, when you push it down into a real apples-to-apples, which we've tried to do on the Finance Committee level before, the, the cost, I believe, is about $2,000 more a student for the, for the Voc Tech.
Okay, and then Mary, what do, do you know what ours is, roughly?
Yeah, our, oh, it's our per pupil was about 18,000, I think. And actually, I was at, we did that presentation at Citizens Academy, and we were actually, first, first year in a while that we've gone under the state average for per pupil was this past fiscal, well, FY21 was the first time. So I think that will probably be coming in FY22. The department that, the most current numbers are FY21s.
Okay, so is it true, we're roughly at like 2 million or so going from the Danvers Public School budget to Essex Tech?
I think it's, I think it's closer to 3 million.
It's 3 million, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Other questions from the committee?
Yeah, so the 50% that applied from the eighth graders, is that higher or lower than years past, do we know?
About the same.
About the same, okay.
I don't think we've seen a tremendous difference from that standpoint.
The, so the admission hasn't changed?
Well, the admission process changed slightly. So I will tell you that there's two components to the admission up there. There is a, there are about 360 students up there come from, so if you understand, the original, originally you had the Essex Aggie School, and you had the North Shore Voc Tech School. So back in, I think it was 2013, 2014, those two things were combined. So the student body up there is in part those 17 member sending community kids, and in part overarching Essex County. So we have a number of students up there that are from outside of those 17 sending, sending districts, about 360 of the kids out of the 1,800 are from that, from that, those, those spots. The, the admissions policy this year changed the way we're going to deal with those students. And those students are going to be dealt with through a lottery selection process. So that, so no longer will the students that are accepted into the Aggie portion of the school via non-sending communities. Will they be a competitive, you know, based on, based on certain academic and, and performance criteria? The, the rationale for that was that many of those kids that were applying to those positions from those communities also applied to other private and parochial schools. And so the, the acceptance to admission component of that, you know, if you think, okay, we accept 400 kids, so we can get the 360 to show up, wasn't working out. So very, the, many of those kids who were selected were deciding to go to other schools. In addition, the caliber of student that applies for those positions tends to be a slightly higher base than what you see from the sending communities. So the, that process has, has been changed relatively dramatically. On the sending community side, they, there's an additional emphasis that was placed on, basically, reviews from teachers and providing a, each student is required to provide a, basically a survey from a teacher. And it's a, and that survey is now taken into account, as well as the, the other criteria of attendance, behavior, and academics.
So that hasn't changed at all, they're still looking?
It's slightly changed because of the, the teacher component of it.
Yeah.
So from that standpoint, it's, it's plausible that we might see some differentiation in terms of the, in terms of the numbers, but just, just based on, I mean, I guess, this is just, again, this is, this isn't year, year over year, so I apologize from that standpoint, but just to sort of put it in perspective, Danvers represents about 17% of the total applicants, and we've generally got about 18 to 19% of the admissions from the sending, from the sending schools. One of the areas that I have pushed is that there should be greater recruitment in communities like Swampscot, Marblehead, and the Masonomet Schools that are significantly underrepresented within the school, and that, that may or may not diminish the number of admissions from Danvers or any other community, but that those, that the admissions process should be, should, should really attractively, actively try to make sure that we are doing the best we can to get every, those, those school district communities represented as a portion of their population, and not to, not to do that via quotas, but to do that by trying to get more kids from these other communities to, to apply.
Could you talk, are they, I, I think Gabe a couple of months ago made a comment that they're expa, well, they, they just have dreams of keep expanding, keep expanding. Are there any updates on expansion of classes or buildings or anything like that that we should be aware of as well?
Well, the governor will be there tomorrow, giving him, giving us a nice grant to help out to continue with some of those things.
Okay.
He seems to be there every month, giving money for something. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the plan there is to, the, I will, I will say this, that the administration up there believes very, very strongly in the program that they, that's provided up there. There's a lot of support for that program, and, and there is a belief that expanding that program is beneficial to the, both the county and the sending communities.
Sorry, I had a quick question to piggyback. We, they come to Holton Richmond, right?
Correct.
Do we ever send buses there?
No, they, they, they host two open house days that families would take to their kids on their own, and they're on Saturdays.
Do we have to allow them to come?
So the historical practice, for years, Voc Tech schools would go to middle schools, and it would be a, an opt-in presentation, meaning you'd have to sign up to go. I'd say maybe five or six years ago, they requested that we allow them to meet with all eighth graders. And so, you know, from an access standpoint, we, as far as I know, every middle school in our league or in our area acquiesced to that request.
Okay, that's gonna be my question. If everyone doesn't, I agree. If we were just the only ones, I'd say that's the conversation.
I haven't surveyed, I haven't, you know, I haven't surveyed, obviously, I'm not at the middle school anymore, but I don't know what the current practices across, that's, that could easily be acquired.
Yeah.
But, you know, that was something that at first was not the practice, and they, amongst other things, you know, sort of vigorously pressed us to provide that access.
Yes, that would be interesting, like, are they doing that in Marblehead and Swampscot? You know, if all the communities, 21 communities are doing, and I think that's one thing, but if they're not, maybe that's the conversation
I
at the, you know, middle school admin level.
I, I, I would say that the, when, when I have asked the administration directly whether they more actively recruit kids from Danvers and PBD, the answer has been absolutely not. So you can
Well, yeah.
I mean, you know, all I can do with that point is ask the question, and, and, you know, but that is, that is their, that is their answer, so.
Good for thought. We'll get Adam, let's just say.
It's, it's, you know, just to, to these points, it's, it's, it's a tough haul to go to Swampscot and Marblehead, right, from, from Danvers in the morning. That would be, if I lived in Swampscot and Marblehead, I wouldn't want to come.
It's not an easy one to go from PBD either, necessarily.
Right, but it's easier than going from Marblehead. But one of my questions is, you know, we're probably, I guess it's a comment and then a question, I, we're probably prime hunting ground for them, right? You know, it just makes sense for our, our students, we're closer. But, you know, to Alice's question earlier, there is a lot of, I guess, expansion that they've done over the past several years. Have they just done a huge number of expansions as far as the, the students that they can, they can, their capacity overall for their students, or is it, is that why we're starting to see some increases just in general, or is?
Well, yes and no. So, so there's definitely been facility increases, especially on what's called the, the South Campus, which is the older Aggie portion of the property. Other, other stuff that they've done up there has been, what I would say is a little bit more innovative. So for example, the expansion this year stems predominantly from, from a desire to be able to expand what I think we would probably describe as the traditional vocational programs up there. Those programs tend to be the most intensive in regards to both the costs and also facilities. And so the ability to be, it's easy enough to be able to simply build another classroom to be able to put kids in, but be able to build a classroom that would allow you to be able to effectively teach the types of, of, of classes that you need to there is much more difficult. So what they've done is aggressively work with, without placements for their juniors and seniors. And so the kids who are juniors and seniors in those carpentry, electrician, plumbing programs, who are very, very desirable in the workplace, they've worked to get those kids into, into, you know, some, some pretty aggressive internships. And then that in turn opens the classroom space up to expand the, the sophomore and freshman classes. So what's happened is, is that, is it, you know, whereas you used to be able to put 16 kids in a class, and that meant that you'd be able to put 16 freshmen, 16 sophomores, blah, 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 all the way up. Because the juniors and seniors are not actually utilizing classroom space as much, they've now been able to expand the, that program on the freshman and sophomore level and all the way up through to 32 kids. So they've been aggressive from that standpoint in terms of those programs, but also obviously in expansion across the street as well. Thank you.
I think I just have a comment, and I, I think it always trickles back to what can we do to keep the students within, you know, our town and trickling into the high school. And it goes back to a comment I think I made at the last school committee session, which was, you know, anecdotally, I made a tour throughout the middle school, saw the students, saw the teachers, and I know proximity is one thing, but the quality of the program and the engagement of students, when I was walking through that building, I said, if I was Essex Tech, I would want these kids. And I think that's something that has to be made abundantly clear to parents across this community, that there are some great things happening at the middle school. And, and I'll leave that there. Mike, I have a question and then another comment, which is, do you have any notion in regards to, and maybe it's part of our survey, what particular program is most intriguing or creates the largest draw for Danvers students? And, and I ask that potentially for us as a school committee and looking at the budget and potentially creating a program at the high school, which would allow so many students to, you know, stay within, you know, within Danvers.
So the, so the process up there is, is that you don't go, you don't get accepted into a particular program. So you know when you're, when you're an eighth grader going into that school, that you're going to basically be fighting for a spot, so to speak, in what would be, you know, arguably the most desirable programs, which still are programs like electrician, like plumber, like carpentry, like HVAC. Those, those positions that will afford you the opportunity to make real money in a real job when you get out of, when you get out of high school, those are the most attractive programs up there still, and the most desirable ones in terms of what people are doing. The, the agricultural programs are very, very popular up there as well. And, and you can tell that by, again, you're talking, you're talking about a kid who's applying to Phillips Andover, Phillips Exeter, and Essex Voc Tech from Haverhill, you know, or from Methuen in this situation. So that's why that's a different program. So those are very popular programs. They've expanded some of the things like the Vet Tech program up there, and, and some of the other ones. I, you know, I, to, I think that, I think that the, the acting superintendent knows better than anybody the, the curriculum challenges that we have in regards to the, the type of kid that wants to go to the, to the Voc Tech school, and what we can offer them here to be able to try to make it more attractive. I think she also can tell you an awful lot what they don't do up, up there, and what we don't do in regards to certain, especially what we would think of as really important liberal arts. You know, I, I've been really impressed since I've been up there, but understand something. I'm, I'm a lawyer who went, was a history major, who has, doesn't, you know, I did that type of a thing. That's not going, going on. At, you know, as I've said to other people, frankly, if, if you want to be a lawyer, don't go up there, because you're not going to learn to think like a lawyer, I can assure you that. But for those kids that are there, you know, when you talk about what, you know, in, in English and math, they're, they're teaching to the MCAS, and they're doing really well in terms of what those kids do when they get into those programs. And it's, that's what they do. And then the rest of the stuff is, is these programs that are really interesting, the kids find really interesting. There's a lot of hands-on stuff there with it. The other thing I will tell you that, that, that's done up at, up at the Voc Tech, which has really, really worked well for them, and, and I watch it, is, is they have an integration academy that they bring the kids in as, once they've been accepted, and they bring them in in the summer before. And, and they, they, these kids are made a part of that community. They, this is, this is a school community, truly a school community, and they do everything they can from the point that those kids come in as eighth graders going into their freshman year, to make them feel as though they're part of that community, and to, and to make them become a part of that community. And, you know, I know that's something we really want here as well, but it's, you know, and it's maybe a little easier for them to do, because these kids are coming from all different places. They don't really know each other. There's no, you know, there's no cliques. There's none, none of the stuff that happens in a local community when you've known each other. I, this kid, I don't know if this kid was good in sports. I don't know if this kid can sing. And so they take that and they really push it so that everybody becomes part of that community. And that's a huge thing up there that they play through the entirety of the, you know, I mean, and I, just to put it, our school committee meetings, we have a huge television that we, that, that at least twice during those meetings, we're being shown what those kids are doing at that, at that school, and they're, and we're seeing the hawk of the week, or the hawk of the month. We're seeing the teacher of the month. That's all being done up there, and, and it's, it's effective.
Gabe, to answer your question, Mike, you had sent us a PDF and in it, they break down, for Danvers, it looks like it's plumbing, information, systems, technology, culinary arts, those seem to be the top, health assisting, so they're varying. So it's page 37 of what Mike sent us.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Happy holidays to all of you, and I'll be back in six months if you want me to, and
Yeah, it's a, it's tough budget season, and will be interesting.
That's right, I'll see you all. The budget, you have to get to come inform me of the budget as well.
I, I am somewhat, you know, when the superintendent presented to Finance Committee in the selectment last year, she went out of her way to talk about, hey, we're at our max, there's no plans for expansion. And I think she was threading a bit of a needle there. There may have been no plans for expansion that night, but it does sound like, you know, their overall plan is to keep expanding. And to the extent that, again, I don't know what percentage Danvers makes up of the populations altogether. You may have that number. If you look at the 17, 17-member communities, it was 29, actually.
Yeah, so I think our, we make up about 10% of the total eighth grade population of the sending communities.
All right, and right now, Danvers
It's about 18%, 19% of the students up there, so it's about double of what it, of what
Almost double in relation to our percentage of the, of the district. And that, you know, the fact that it's difficult to predict year over year really can, you know, has a budget impact. And then it has a budget impact on us, and frankly, we have some challenges, as you pointed As you pointed out, for example, out of district placements, you know, more students who may need services altogether. We have challenges that the vocational school doesn't. So for us to to see money that could be devoted to education, say at Danvers High School, going to the vocational school, as good a program as they have, really can be a budget buster for the town and also makes running the public school increasingly difficult. So a some sort of compromise on admissions would probably help us. But I appreciate what you're doing. It's clear you're working as hard as you can on these things.
Yeah. And again, I, as I had said to you when when we went through the appointment process, you know, my I'm not somebody who was interested in going in there and and I mean, I will tell you, I voted against the admissions policies. And when I voted against the admissions, another issue, we we get, Danvers, I get nine votes. It's a little different because it's based on your so. So when the admissions policy was put up and I voted against it, it was, you know, they they do what? You know, Mr. Landers, how do you vote? Nay. Huh? Was basically, and then they had to calculate how many negative votes that was against the admissions policy. But, you know, as a general as a general rule, I'm I'm not up there to just vote against stuff. Sure. You know, my job is to to work on behalf of these, the you guys and the Danvers students and the Danvers residents who don't have any kids in school and perhaps most importantly, those 250 kids who are up there from Danvers who are getting an education. And ultimately, my most important thing as a member of that school committee is to make sure that those kids are getting what's best for them. But you're absolutely right. We have this weird balancing act that we have to do because if we're going to spend a whole bunch of money for just 250 students and it becomes at the expense of the other 1,500 students that we have in Danvers and we have to ask ourselves, is that fair on both sides? And I and I and I appreciate that. And and I think that's the that's the challenge going forward. And I'm hoping to try to be to build more consensus and to build more cooperation with the school that we can forge that consensus that helps us out in Danvers.
Well, Mike, thank you for being here. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you again. Happy holidays.
Unless there's any other items of interest from the school committee, we're ready for our items of interest from the community, if there are. Sure. You've been looking like you wanted to talk since you came in. So please just go to the microphone. Tell us who you are. We generally give about three minutes, give or take, to say what you need to say.
My name is Tony Mataragas. I I have two two children in the Danvers Public School System. Number one, I want to thank you, Chairman, and everyone on the board for taking time to listen. I'm here on behalf of facilities and gym usage. I currently have founded North Star Basketball Training LLC. And I tried to reach out to the Parker Recs Department in regards to renting out a facility in Danvers because I'd say about 75 to 80% of the my campers are Danvers residents. And I didn't even get a phone call back. I was told to apply. I applied. I followed up with Parker Rec Department, I'd say, three multiple times within the course of two weeks, and I didn't even get a phone call back. I look at I currently coach. I help coach on the eighth grade boys' basketball team at Danvers. That's why I'm dressing this attire right now. Actually, we just actually finished practice right now at the at the Vi at the small gym right now. So I'm very enthusiastic about basketball. And the reason why I say that is because we moved here about two and a half years ago. My daughter's at the Thorpe Elementary School and my and my son's in eighth grade at the Holton Richmond School. And and the reason why I say that is because when I came here and a lot of people that I met in Danvers, they said, don't even think about getting a gym because it's never going to happen. Everything's on lockdown in this town. And I said, why? All I'm trying to do is, you know, rent out a space.
Yep.
Buy extra equipment for the kids. The only thing that's hindering here, and this is all about the kids. It's not about me or the next parent. It it hurts the kids the most. And as I heard Mr. Landers, I believe, talking about community, that's one way other than just rental space that I can give back. But also, these gyms got to be open with the correct supervision, of course, and they're not. And you look at kids and I see and I've been coaching a very I've been coaching over 30 years. And you see these kids grow up, Salem, Peabody. And we were in Salem for 35 years. We lived in Salem and it's 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 a huge basketball community. Whereas, you know, I can get into a gym anytime I want it. These these kids are paying the price for it. And then you wonder why the big fat is, let's go to private school. Let's go to a Catholic school. No one wants to go to public schools anymore. Let's go to Essex Tech.
Yeah.
The community has to start here and it just seems like everyone's in their own little pocket of clicks and it's not working. And I'm this is just from a sports point of view. And more more from a basketball point of view of using a gym, not so much a field or a baseball field or a soccer field, but to be able to get into a gym, I haven't been able to do it. I would love to. I think it builds up a sense of community even more. And not just for my particular company, but also for for the kids in general.
Yep.
And I haven't seen it in this town. I haven't been here long. I hope we do see it because I think that's going to help kids grow together here instead of being in pockets.
You you raised a good point and it's actually something that's already on our radar. We had a conversation, Gabe and I had a conversation.
Okay.
During one of our meetings with the superintendent and Adams were of what we're looking for as well. So let's just say that it's definitely on our radar and it's something we'd like. I know I'd like to see it happen. I think you raise great points.
Great. So great. I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say that the DHS administration is more than happy to partner with anyone who wants to access this excellent facility. I'm all for it. I I'm all for that.
We're on board. So.
Adam, you're going to get a lot of calls tomorrow.
We just have to get a couple other a couple other town partners.
I was honestly appalled by how what I heard and I was like, this can't be. And this sport, you know, everyone knows here, sports bring a huge amount of community together, whether whatever sport it is, whether it's cheerleading or football, basketball, baseball, whatever it is, it brings a lot of the community and a lot of kids together and a lot of kids play them. And we don't want to see them suffer. That's all it is.
I think we're with you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
You too. Mr. Zuberek, are you journalist or commentator tonight? Both?
I'm not going to say. I'm a resident, Mark Zuberek. And I really appreciated the presentation by Mike Landers. Mike Landers and I used to serve on the school, I mean, on the selectman board. And he's got some very good ideas. But I think what he's bringing back is what he's being fed by the Essex Tech. What I think what we need to do, and and I've been stressing this over and over again, every every meeting I get a chance, is that we need to build that culture in our own facility where we can retain those students by being a magnet for something that they want. And we've spoken before. We're going to speak again. The thing is that Mike Landers is very effective in what he's doing. But he's also, what I've heard in the last two school committee meetings is that the Essex Tech is expanding. It's expanding. It's growing. It's growing. Of course, it's growing. The state is funding a lot of the night school activities, the workman's training activities. This is not all high school level, you know, functions. So what what Mike is saying is that, yes, there's money coming in, but it's coming in from the state, but it's for the purpose of training our labor force. And that's what Essex Tech has a function to serve the North Shore. So I just hope that, you know, we we don't just accept the fact that, yes, they're growing. They may not get any more students than they already have. But we need to figure out how we can educate our students at the same per student rate that Essex Tech is spending. We need to start cutting our budget.
I think Mike said that the, when you make it apples to apples, Essex Tech actually spends $2,000 more per student. So you want us to increase our budgets.
No, 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 no. Oh, you see, you what you're you're under the conception that the school committee controlled budget is one piece. But the other piece, which after you add everything together, is $85 million a year that Danvers spends for education. And it includes the facilities and includes the fields and includes all of the functions that are being provided to the school department.
Which are also included in our per student cost. We can go.
No, they're not.
Yes, they are.
Well, okay, we we can agree to disagree, but we've had this discussion before. But we will continue because the budget is coming up. And what you need to do is you need to, their costs are not much higher. They should be higher because they have a different function than what our liberal arts courses really prepare our students for. So we have to start thinking creatively instead of burying our head that, hey, that we can't, we can't do anything about.
Let's talk about this the next time I'm on because I don't want, we're not going to turn this into a dialogue.
I'll be here.
Yeah. Thanks, Mark. All right. Any other items of interest from the community? Sure, please.
Mine's not as heavy. I wanted to talk about our current homework policies. And I wanted to see if there were any plans to make changes there. I know that having two kids in the school system, it's been the practice that kids do not have assigned homework until fifth grade. And I understand I understand the thought process behind that. I understand where it came from and it was a big trend years ago. But I think coming out of COVID, there are so many gaps to fill. And I feel as though those gaps are now left to just the schools and the teachers. And, you know, it takes a village, right? So I think it would be really wonderful to look at those homework policies and maybe put something into place earlier on, especially being that when they get to the middle school, when they get to Holton Richmond, they have a significant amount of homework as compared to years past. And, you know, if we started them younger, it would help build that stamina and the perseverance as they would need when they would get to the older grades.
Okay. Fair question. Mary, I have to sort of let you handle that one, I think.
Okay, yeah, our homework policy is that you're there's reading assigned every night. And that's like so. So it's easy to say that's not our home, you know, we don't have a homework policy, but we that's the important thing catered to is that you read with your child and your child reads to you. And that's like the literacy is the most important and we have data on that. I think Julie Posternak shared that at the last, one of the last presentations she did.
It's the best predictor of academic success.
Yeah, no, and I think most families do do that. But I think it's sometimes difficult whenever you're working with kids as a parent as opposed to a teacher and picking those just write books. And, you know, when when later in years, they have to prove their knowledge about what they're reading through their open responses and through their response to literature. I don't know if 20 minutes a night is going to get them to where they need to be when they're older. And I, you know, I this is, I I've heard chatter among parents that they would like to see more homework. And I'm not saying, and I know the poor kids sitting in the room, they're like, seriously? Stop talking about giving us homework. Maybe it doesn't have to be a mandatory thing. Maybe it can just be supplying them or supplying the families that are willing and able to to go that extra step and support the teachers in the classroom and support the gaps that that we're seeing right now as a result of COVID.
I know we brought this up in other meetings and every single teacher and principal I've spoken to, I said to reach out to them and they'll give them homework. So I do think, I mean, the the.
enrichment activities.
Exactly.
So you should reach out to your personal.
So I think the messaging could very well be for parents who do believe their child would benefit from the additional home assignments to reach out to those teachers. I'm honestly just repeating what was said in previous meetings.
No, and I think that's very nice, but I also think it would be nice to put something in place that would be cohesive among the district. That way it gives the same opportunity to every kid.
Yeah, I think, you know, we also are in the situation where some kids don't kept picked up from an after school till six or 6:30 and the last thing the parents want to do is homework with them. They want to see them. So I think the first step is reaching out if you'd like additional enrichment and that's the first step. So we can leave it at that, I think, for now.
Okay.
But thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else from the public before we move on to our student representative? No, it's time for the student representatives. Yeah, Lily.
Hi, everyone. So just a few student updates. So congratulations to the DHS theater. Congratulations to the DHS theater program for their recent production of Once on this Island. The cast approved on three fantastic productions and their next focus is working on a production for the Drama Fest event. And this year, we're doing something a little unique with it. DHS students are working with fifth grade students to help write original plays to be acted out by DHS students. So from what I've gathered from it, students during like our community block and like different events will go down to, I think it was Smith recently on Friday. Yes, we've done four. Four, okay. So, yeah, so we go to the elementary schools. They help us craft and write and then we modify it and then eventually we have Drama Fest. It will be a production written basically by fifth graders, which I think is really cool and really neat. Winter sports are underway and just a quickly, good luck to all the teams. And we want to send out a final congratulations to our all athletes for a great season. DHS had 15 student athletes named to the all conference team and 14 student athletes named All Stars. And congratulations to Kristen McCarthy, who was named Coach of the Year for field hockey. The our Danvers Falcons marching band marched in the North End Christmas parade. You can check out photos on the DPS Facebook page. And one of the two acapella groups we have here at Danvers, Falcon Eyes, performed at the Mass Municipal Association Holiday Event and also performed at Thorpe Elementary School, which I went. It was amazing. We danced, we sang, it was great. And lastly, the DHS DECA program is getting its competition entries underway and then we'll compete locally later this week. We'll provide an update in January about their work.
Great. Thank you.
Can I say something? I have noticed a tremendous difference over the last couple of years, probably because of COVID, but how much the high school students are incorporating more into the elementary and the middle school. And like the DECA students just threw the seventh and eighth graders a dance on Friday. I mean, we talk about that sense of community and I think that, like, I want to commend the middle, the high school students for everything that they are doing to try to create that community with the younger students. I've seen just the bands are going to the middle, to the elementary schools. They went to the middle school for the turkey trot, like, they're just doing a lot. So I think it's fantastic that we're seeing that.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Nope, not seeing anyone. So let's move on to Allison, Robin and the superintendent's search update.
Yeah, this is just really quick. We had our, what do you want to put? So since we last met in October, we've had our screening committee where we went over the rules, regulations. Last week, we did select finalists to come. So this week, we will have seven people coming. We cannot share the name who the candidates are. They won't actually be embargoed until the next school committee meeting, which is January 9th. So on Monday, our last meeting will be on December 19th. The meeting will be after all the interviews and we'll decide about three to five candidates we're going to bring forth to the community. And that will be when we have time for you all to come meet at the school. They'll be touring the schools and then at some point, we as a school committee will go visit where they are currently right now. But again, you will not find the names until January 9th. So everyone on the committee is keeping that that way. Our lips are sealed till then. So.
Thank you.
But we have a great committee. So thank you to everyone on it. It's been a lot of work.
Seems like it in a short time, yes. Alice, any comments, anything to add? Anything to add?
No, Robin was selected as our chair of the selection committee. So she's been taking lead, working closely with our consultant through that, the whole process.
Great.
Yeah.
Any questions for Robin or Alice on the search?
No, I would just say thank you. I know it's, it's been a long, a lot of meetings and a lot of interviews. And I know it's time consuming and, and can be challenging at times. So just thanks for, for the effort on this one.
It feels like in January, things are really going to be rolling in a more public way, which is good.
So make no plans in January, again, for this school committee.
There you go. Good way to spend the cold weather.
I have a question. Can you talk a little bit about the candidate pool? Like, how, how broad was it? How wide was it? National? Did you get some local candidates? And the, I know you can't say who, but you know, what are we looking at in regards to some of the profiles or some of the key things we're looking for?
So MASC did share it like with nationwide organizations and websites. Whether or not they chose to actually publish that was another story. You know what I mean? But yeah, we did get people from across the country. We did get people local. We got people a couple of states over, diverse backgrounds. So we did get, you know, Dorothy said that the actual pool of candidates was very strong. That was helpful.
In regards to numbers, was it a high number of folks? What are we looking at demographically?
Can we share the number?
I don't know.
I don't know if we can share the number.
I don't know.
Mary, do you know?
I don't know. I don't know either.
She said she was very pleased with the number. And she's pretty honest. She didn't think it was too low or too high. I don't know how else to say that without being a little vague, I know, but.
So I know we're down to the last seven people. What are some of the things that separated the seven from the rest? Like, what were we specifically looking for in that pool?
Really looking at what was created from the focus groups and the surveys, that pamphlet, and seeing how they fit into that criteria. I mean, I can say that the selection was very thoughtful. And we were pretty much all on board with who we wanted to bring in, which I thought was great because we all looked back at that brochure and the vision and what we, what we felt like we needed in the next superintendent. With that said, I mean, I'm only speaking personally for me. I'm not concerned that we won't find a strong candidate from one of the candidates coming in this week. Like, I feel very comfortable and strong with that.
Thank you.
I don't know if you have anything to add on that.
No, no. I mean, again, it was, I was happy that we all pretty much, we all agreed on the candidates to bring in. And they are all very strong. And some of them we're bringing in just to get kind of a perspective that might be a little different than what we were looking for in terms of experience. So we're, hopefully we have a diverse background enough of a pool where, you know, we'll, we'll see every kind of candidate possible.
Great, thank you. Information from the superintendent?
Okay, well, I'm very excited to get to our student presentations tonight. And Mike Landers talks about showing videos, but we actually have people live as well as a video in, in our audience. So I'm going to start with Thorpe School. They're going to present Tiger Five, which is kind of one of our strong, school-wide expectations program that's going on in the elementary schools.
Yeah. Good evening and thank you very much for inviting us here tonight. I've heard a lot of talk about students. And I have to say, I have, I have the cream of the crop with me tonight. So really excited and proud. We're really excited to share with you what Tiger Time is all about and the impact that it's had on our students and the entire school community. We'll start with a short video and then we'll hear from our students and in their own words, they're going to share how this, how they view Tiger Time and what it means to them. So let's go with the video.
Welcome to Tiger Time. Today, the intention of our circle is to show what happens our Tiger Five is about. Teamwork, integrity, growth mindset, empathy, and responsibility. Let's get started by saying our Tiger Five pledge. Is there anyone that can read us their Tiger Five pledge?
To your higher, as higher, we call us Tigers. Teamwork, integrity, growth mindset, and the need to follow the goals.
Okay, now we'll hear from our students. It's my pleasure to introduce Nyla Austin.
Good evening. My name is Nyla Austin. Tonight, I'm going to talk about my favorite part of Tiger Time and how the Tiger Five changed fifth grade. First, my favorite part of Tiger Time is when we do the activities like red light, green light, and so much more. In Tiger Time, we practice our school-wide expectations called the Tiger Five, which is teamwork, integrity, growth mindset, empathy, and responsibility. When we first started Tiger Five, Tiger Time, fifth grade used the Tiger Five, but not always. The most important, the most important ones, I think, are teamwork and growth mindset. Here's why. My friends and I use the Tiger Five every day now. I have made so many friends from how they use the Tiger Five with one another. We use growth mindset in math or even sometimes recess. When we do things that are hard, like things that we don't know how to do but can do, we don't give up. We use a growth mindset, not a fixed mindset. We also use teamwork a lot in class and out of school, too. I use it out of school with my siblings and my dance team. We use it a lot in class. We, we have to use teamwork to do a lot of things with our partners. I think Tiger Time is very important to our school and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd now like to introduce Alex Reed.
Hello, my name, thank you. Hello, my name is Alexander Reed. I'm going to share my favorite part of Tiger Time and share about some of the activities we do in Tiger Time. My favorite part of Tiger Time is all the activities like red light, green light, where we work in groups of two trying to make it to the end together. The second activity I like is the Tiger Triangle Challenge. This one helps us practice teamwork by get, by working together. Integrity by following the game rules. Growth mindset by practicing empathy, by working, by thinking of our teammates and respecting their space. And responsibility by showing good sportsmanship. The main focus of Tiger Time is the Tiger Five and the zones of regulation like blue, yellow, green, and red zones. Blue zone is when we might feel sad or tired. Yellow zone, you might be excited or anxious. And green zone is happy and calm. Red is stronger emotions like mad or overjoyed. I can tell a teacher what zone I am in so they can help me. Or I can tell a friend so they can understand where I am at. The zones help me understand my emotions and my friends' feelings. I also know that all the students use the Tiger Five when we don't even know it, like playing a game at recess, showing integrity by not arguing or being unfair. Tiger Time is helpful for students. It's fun and I think it should be a permanent part of our school.
And finally, I'd like to introduce Julia Osgood.
Good evening. I'm Julia Osgood and I want to share about how we use talking pieces. These are small objects that represent the Tiger Five in our identity. We use the Tiger Five every day. Personally, for my talking piece, I have a J keychain that belongs to me. It represents me and my name. A lot of people bring in all different types of talking pieces and it represents themselves and who they are. My favorite part about the talking pieces is sharing. I like when I or other people share. That way I learn more about them or me. Talking pieces are items we use when someone is talking. The talking pieces are important to me and everyone in the school. It's important that we make sure we listen to whoever has the talking piece because it makes sure everyone feels heard and that we all belong. It's always nice to listen to people, no matter who, to the person, no matter who it is. It feels good when a talking piece is used because it feels like your talking piece is needed. It feels like I am needed. It feels, it's a great way to communicate without people talking amongst themselves. Our school's talking pieces build connections as a community. I learned many, many things about my friends by their talking pieces. I learned new things like, that they like to do or things they like. Tiger Time is unique and fun for our school. I had fun sharing with you all about talking pieces. Goodnight, goodbye and goodnight to all.
So would you like to ask any questions?
Yeah, that's great. Any, any questions from the committee?
I was just going to say, so Alex, Nyla and Julia, you guys did a great job. So thank you. But I witnessed Tiger Time firsthand. Mrs. Ward welcomed me to her school and Mary and I toured Thorpe. And it was awesome. And Tiger Time was everywhere. And we went into an art class and on the wall, they showed, like, they were showing that they were focusing on growth mindset during the art class. And it was just, it was great. So I love the fact that you pulling it through and, and I thought it was a nice addition. So, so thank you. That was, that was great.
Thank you. It's all throughout the school. And, and the thing is, I was talking to the art teacher just today, this morning. And as they reach the teamwork and the integrity and growth mindset, all they, all, all they get from it, no rewards, no trinkets or anything, just the, the light goes on. And just for that, you know, they're, they're very proud of themselves. So it's a, it's, it's a great school-wide program. And yeah, I want to thank you for having us here tonight. Tiger Time has really become an important part of our school culture and it supports and enhances our comprehensive, school-wide, multi-tiered system of support. I want to thank our families for being here tonight. Thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules and having your children here. It's really important to us and we thank you. It means a lot. I want to thank the entire Tiger team that collaborates and plans every week to provide meaningful Tiger Time lessons to all our students. I really want to thank Mr. Amaral, who's a major part of Tiger Time. And he's a great movie maker, isn't he? I put him up there with Spielberg. But most of all, I want to thank these children. They're a great example and role models for the rest of the school. They were so excited to be here tonight, so excited to share how Tiger Time has impacted their lives. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also wanted to add that Michael Amaral and Michael DeSantis, the social worker at Thorpe, both were, took part in the district-wide training on restorative circles. And it's been great to watch this video and see how he's taking that and incorporated that into the elementary work and into their Tiger Five. It's been a really, I think, an important part of what the kids have been doing. So I really thank them. And the other thing I was going to know, just some colleagues that have kids at Thorpe, they like talk about Tiger Five at home. And they'll respond to their siblings like that. You're not, you don't have a lot of empathy right now. They use it at home as well as in the school, so.
Well, it's funny, there are people in this town who think there's something nefarious about social and emotional learning. And I think this is an example of, it's about teamwork. It's about belonging. It's about getting kids to work together to recognize their own emotional state and where they are and find mutual support. So great. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary?
Hi. From our elementary schools all the way up to Danvers High School, we have another group of students coming to present their next-gen work. And I'm going to turn it over to Adam to do a little more explaining about that background.
Yes, I'm really pleased to have our next-gen leadership group here tonight. I think that at Danvers High School, we continue to look at student leadership and student voice as sort of a key component of what makes a high school successful. You know, we heard about the importance of having students feel like they're a part of their school community. And, and so the next-gen leaders are just one group that focuses on that goal. So I'm really pleased to have them come up to the podium. They'll introduce themselves and take it away from there. So our next-gen leaders, thanks for coming up.
Well, they're coming up, Thorpe Tigers. If you want to go and do your, hang out, you know? Thank you for coming. You guys are all great.
Thank you.
You don't have to go if you find this exciting. Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, he's like, no, I'm good, I'm good.
Great job, guys. Nice job.
You. You can, you don't have to.
Great job.
So welcome the Next Gen Club.
Hello, my name is Ava Noon. I'm a senior and leader of the Next Gen here at Danvers High School.
Hello, I'm Isaiah Young and I'm the other leader of Next Gen here at the Danvers High School.
I'm Kevin Burke. I'm a junior leader of Next Gen.
Yeah, thank you. So Next Gen is a student-led program dedicated to providing anti-bias training, curriculum, and interactive games to assist change in our school culture. Our main focus is to educate peers and teachers on equity and inclusion from a youth perspective.
Currently, currently, Next Gen provides a lot of value, but with your help, we could provide a lot more. So far, Next Gen has started its anti-bias training with students through weekly meetings. We've also started, we've also started with the teachers providing anti-bias training during their summer professional development. We've received positive outcomes, not just here in Danvers, but recently, but recently, we were visited by the Assistant Superintendent of Vrenthrop Public Schools. She has asked, we assist in the youth voice and replicate Next Gen there.
On this slide, we have our advisor, Janelle Ridley. She's right over here. Ms. Ridley helps maintain and create the safe environment the freshmen are able to utilize today during our weekly meetings.
Next Gen started off originally as leadership through game design. And originally, Ms. Ridley came into our school and decided, and helped, and decided to help, oh, wow. One second. And decided that she would use us students to create a game to help teach the teachers and/or students at Danvers High. And while we started to, we really liked the idea of teaching and educating the teachers and students at Danvers, we decided to pivot a little bit to creating a more long-term change. And so we decided to create a curriculum dedicated to help teaching students and teachers about different social issues in our school to help create like a better school culture. And long-term, we decided that the best group to focus was the freshman, freshman class. Because they are eventually going to be our student leaders. They're going to be in the position we are. They're going to be captains. They're going to be club presidents. They're going to be running our school eventually. And it starts from the top.
Um, we're going to go to the cycles. So Next Gen has five, four, five, well, sorry. We have five core goals that we've surrounded our program around. Our first was creating curriculum. We decided that the creating the curriculum is something that we can base each of our meetings off of. I also have a thing that I'm going to give to you guys. It's.
Wow. Thank you.
Our second goal is to recruit freshmen. At the beginning of the school year, we felt that to recruit freshmen, we wanted to hold an assembly. Assembly's happening each week here, at least once usually. And we held an assembly, a slideshow kind of like this, overviewing Next Gen. And within a survey at the end, showing how they can sign up. And it's just for freshmen who are also wanting to change our community and potentially be future leaders. Our, we also wanted to offer professional developments to our teachers. We felt like also educating the teachers of our community will allow the students around Danvers High to feel more comfortable going to teachers. And we just want to be a bridge from students to teachers because we feel like some students don't feel like they can openly have these harder topics and conversations with our teachers of, at our high school. So we felt like Next Gen is a great opportunity to be a bridge for these students. Our main goal at the end around February is to create a playable game. This This game will showcase what our freshmen have been working hard towards to, um, at the end, change, improve student culture. So this game is going to be a virtual escape room. And each escape room is going to showcase something that the students of our club is hoping to educate on. Our freshmen decided that something they feel like is a reoccurring issue around our school is microaggressions. And so our game, our escape room, is going to be centered around microaggressions. And each room is going to be a different microaggression in a different setting for the students of our high school and the teachers to play. Um, because this is going to be a continuous program, we know that student culture isn't something that we can just measure. We know that it's going to be a gradual and that's why we hope to continue this program.
Makes, what makes next-gen different from a lot of the other clubs is that it's more of a program and it's, we're working to have it more of a permanent fixture of DHS. And we made our own curriculum, which no other club or program does, and it makes it more, oh, it's just something tangible, it's something that the students can really learn from and improve their culture and their behavior. And we have students from every, we're trying to have students from every interest group in our school. And we're really focusing on freshmen because they are going to be the leaders of the school in the future when we're gone. And I think that just is really important because the, it's, the culture in DHS is going to shift when they take over. And what makes, makes even more different is that we have the safe space, is a, when we meet, it is towards the end of the day, we meet around 6:00 PM. And there's not a lot of people in the building. And it creates a safe environment for people to voice their concerns and what they've seen around the school that they want to change. And it's a real trusting environment, everyone there listens and if no one's being rude or nothing, it's just a great and safe environment for all the students there.
To show what our freshmen have been learning throughout, we gathered feedback from three of our current freshmen.
So from Vivian, she joined next-gen because she wanted to be a leader and stand up for what's right. She wanted to make us, she wanted to make our school a better community where everyone can thrive and feel like they belong.
Um, from Grace, she joined next-gen because she feels like she can really be herself there and people will always listen. She also feels like the clubs teaches you how to be a better person and help your community more. Next-gen has really opened up her eyes and made her more aware as to what the problems in the world are and how she can help solve them.
From Riley, I joined next-gen to bring awareness to student problems that they face during school and outside of school. I also joined next-gen because I wanted to improve the school's environment for the students who are not yet in Danvers High. How can you guys help? Overall, would like your support, but more specifically, uh, I think one of the first biggest steps is having, helping us transition from the high school right now to the middle school. Because as you guys stated earlier, uh, we've noticed that a lot of different groups, as you guys have, oh, wow. Work with the, work with the, work with the middle school and work with the elementary schools. And we think that a lot of this, like, a lot of group think and a lot of the problems that we start to, like, see here in Danvers, start around that level. Because that's when we all come together, that's when everything starts, middle school. Next, we'd also ask if you guys could help us create a, have next-gen be a mandatory freshman elective, sort of like health. Yeah.
Thank you guys, thank you guys for listening, uh, if you guys have any questions, uh, please ask them now.
Well, my first question was about how to get this into the middle school, so I'm glad that you turned that on us. I would love to try to figure out a way because I think you're right, that the middle school is probably a perfect place to get students more involved in something like this and to carry over. So I'm glad that, that was turned on us to, to turn, to help with. Currently, how many students do you have participating?
Currently, right now, we have around, I think, fifteen freshmen and like ten or so upperclassmen.
That's a lot, that's great.
Yeah, that's a good turn.
Um, and I'd like to thank Ms. Ridley, right?
Yeah.
For mentoring our students, they could see how much they value you and look up to you, so thank you for the time that you spend with them.
Other comments or questions?
Oh, um, thank you for coming and sharing. As far as the elective piece, there's a lot that goes into that, so that would be a conversation probably to have with like, yeah, Mr. Federico, Ms. Wormers, um, because it goes into, you know, do we have enough staff, what would the curriculum look like, program of studies? So, I don't know if next year, it might be maybe long-term, I don't know. But it's, I think it's a great idea, yes, yes.
I personally love this because it really speaks to, like, one of the core reasons why I joined the school committee was to really address like bullying and creating a more welcoming environment in schools. And you guys are, I mean, in essence, you're basically getting ahead of it. You know, you're teaching students how to cope, you're trying to create a welcoming environment, creating awareness. I love it on every level and whatever support I can offer, we can offer, just ask, I love it and thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that too, I think, uh, I flipped through your booklet and it looks great, like you're hitting all the, the main, main parts. It was, you know, gender issues, it was racist, all sorts of stuff, you, you guys are designing it, your program around that. So I think any sort of education we can do around that is, is great, so, and I support that as well.
Thank you.
How should we reach out to you?
Do you want my email?
Yeah. Write your email down and give it to me. I already have a couple ideas.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll handle that later.
I love it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wormers.
We've seen, um, a couple of examples this year of, um, students at Danvers High School taking ownership of the, um, the atmosphere and the, the, what's the word I'm looking for, the, how it feels to be at the culture, how it feels to be in Danvers High School. And, uh, I'd love to see the fact that, you know, you're going to be gone in a year, right? You're trying to leave a better school behind than maybe the one you entered. And, um, to have that attitude about life, just to leave things a little better than they were when you got there, that's the way you win. So, um, thank you guys for what you're doing. And, uh, Ms. Ridley, thank you, this is, you must be very proud of these guys because, uh, they, they are clearly some of our, uh, they're gonna make a difference and that's what everyone should strive for, so thank you, thank you guys, you're great, thank you.
Thank you.
As like a, like student to student, like here, here, like as somebody who I feel like, like myself, like I like advocate for people who can't, like I public speak, like, school committee, like anything, like assemblies, like this is the type of group, of like, like whatever you, like organization, like that I felt like I wanted, like, to be in the school system and to handle like all of these different issues. And I'm really, I know we're leaving in a year, but like, I'm really excited to see like where this goes and this is like what I wanted, like in my head of what I could have done. And you guys have done it and you've done it like better than I could ever imagine. And I think also that, like, the idea of like turning it into like a game, I think is really what's gonna draw in students. And I think not even stopping and just like showing this to like freshmen and pushing on freshmen, like push it like on top more than you, you seniors, like, I know like if you guys did like an assembly for the senior class, like I'd be in like a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Like, I'm, yeah, I think you guys should just be so proud of yourself and like, this is what Danvers High School needs.
Thank you, Reese.
Don't cut yourself too short, you're proud of yourself.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, resharing the eighth grade enrollment choices data. Mr. Federico.
Thank you, so, uh, we had a request to go back and share, um, some survey data that we collected last year, so I just want to, so to go back and remind everyone of the context. You know, last year, we talked a lot about how do we, how do we get the information that we need to continue to work on making Danvers High a great place? And so one, um, one area that I thought would be really relevant would be to send out a survey to families that did not choose Danvers High School. Um, and so we, we crafted a short survey, um, a year ago, uh, and we sent it out to, um, any eighth grade family who chose a school other than Danvers High School for their rising eighth grader. So seventy-three families were contacted, uh, we had thirty-four families respond, so forty-six percent. Um, and the survey really focused on two main themes. It focused on, uh, reasons for choosing schools other than DHS and factors that would possibly have supported them, um, in choosing DHS instead of the choice that they made. And we also offered a, an opportunity to, um, schedule an individual interview. And we had two families that, that opted to come in and meet with me and, and really talk more candidly and openly about, about their process and that was really valuable as well. So, you know, if we look at, at the survey again, we had thirty-four respondents. Of those respondents, uh, seventy-three percent or about twenty-five chose a vocational technical high school. Twenty-three point five percent chose a religious high school and then, uh, one respondent, uh, was an independent private high school. So that was sort of the makeup of the respondents that we got. So, again, we, we looked at, one thing we looked at is, what's a reason you would have considered Danvers High? So we had language in the survey. Uh, one, one, uh, one item was that they wanted a school environment that feels more safe and supportive. So, you know, sort of the proof's in the pudding tonight, right? You, you're seeing firsthand the efforts that we've put in place to, um, change the school environment. When this survey went out last year, we were coming off obviously a very difficult year, we went through a lot of adversity as a, as a town and as a school. And so we put a number of components in place, um, to work on that area. So things like community block, um, an increase, uh, an increased emphasis on discipline and expectations, uh, refined reporting and investigative process. Um, and most of all, I think, you know, the elevation of student voice and that's something that's been a priority for me. Uh, another area that, um, families indicated was they really wanted programs that resulted in graduation with certification in the trade or skill. You know, another, uh, reason that was compelling was an option for more work-based oriented, um, experiences. And then lastly, an opportunity to earn college credit while in high school. So, you know, you sort of ran the gamut there, some of those things we definitely can do, some of those things aren't necessarily aligned with what a traditional high school provides. But we did, I think we really have emphasized climate and culture, certainly transparency every week. As part of my communication with families, we continue to share with families what's going on in our school. We are strengthening our career pathways and we're looking at a number of more career anti, career-oriented courses. And we've talked about that before and we'll continue to expand that. Our senior internship program continues to grow and we continue to add ways for our seniors to spend the last sort of month of their senior year being out in the work world, working with companies, getting experiences that provide sort of that window into what it's like to be out in a job. Um, and then we continue to aggressively expand both our AP course offerings and our early college program. So those are two ways that kids can go to Danvers High School and earn college credit while they're in high school. And so those programs have been very successful so far. You know, we also looked at, why did families choose the schools that they chose? So the ones that chose, um, you know, a technical vocational high school experience, certainly one of the reasons they were looking at was a job in a trade, entrance into a trade or technical post-secondary school or even entrance into a four-year college or university, so the results bared that out. We also looked at, what was the most compelling reason for choosing a school other than DHS? So the biggest, um, the biggest selection was a high school experience that got them into a career upon graduation. And that's that sort of classic trade route, trade school route that we saw tonight that we heard a little bit about. Uh, nine of the respondents did have concerns about the climate at DHS. And so we, you know, as, as I spoke earlier, we've taken a lot of steps, I think, to really address those concerns. And our eyes are wide open, our ears are open, we continue to listen and work with our families and our students. Uh, six, six respondents talked about, you know, an opportunity for new friend groups and friendships, new peer groups. And, you know, that's another area that I think, um, people looked outside of Danvers High School. And then lastly, another group, five, wanted their child to be as competitive as possible for admission into a private college or university. You know, we've talked a lot about data, so I thought it was important to look at some trend data. And, um, I chose, um, three high schools, three area high schools that I think are really good comps for Danvers. So I, uh, put together some data on Danvers, Wakefield and Wilmington, and I'll tell you why I chose those schools. Each of those communities, um, sort of have a direct competitive line with a vocational school right in their area. So, uh, if you're familiar with Wakefield, uh, Northeast Voc is literally in their backyard. Wilmington, uh, competes heavily with Shawshank Tech, uh, right near Wilmington High. And if you look at, um, enrollment data, um, the trends are almost identical in many ways. You see schools that, you know, five, six years ago that were up close to a thousand and are now down in the range, Wilmington at six fifty-six, up to Wakefield at eight twenty-seven. And, you know, I share that, um, for a couple of reasons. Number one, we're not an island in this. There are things unique to Danvers that we certainly need to work on and be aware of. But this is also part of a larger, um, trend across the state. And the state data follows, so if you look at overall enrollment in the state in public schools, um, you see a similar trend line. And, you know, um, overall enrollment is down across the state, you know, over forty thousand kids. I think that more than ever now, there's more choice and more new thinking about what you do for secondary education. It's, in the last ten years, it's, secondary education has changed vastly. You add the pandemic and sort of what that did and what that had people think about and, and people are just looking at schooling differently. I also think the dramatic rise in college tuitions is a huge part of families' thinking and what's my child gonna do beyond high school? Um, and, and, you know, for anybody that's paying college tuitions right now, I have two of them on the books, it is not an easy endeavor to, to go through. And other, other choices can provide a different approach there. So I, I think this is valuable in that, um, you know, other communities are looking at similar, um, you know, similar trends. And I think these three communities are really good comps for each other as well. I think they're a lot, they're all town forms of government, um, they really offer a lot of similarities in my opinion. So I just think it was a good comp to kind of think about our context as well. And then, you know, lastly, what are we doing about it? So, you know, again, we are, we are fully engaged and locked into, how do we continue to improve and offer the best programming? The programs that we don't have, what do we need to offer? But also, um, and I think really importantly is, how do we ensure that the town of Danvers understands and has an accurate sense of what this place is like? Um, and that's not easy to do, but we've, we've gone in, you know, I think, full speed in terms of sharing information. So, you know, some of the things that we're doing, uh, we've created the Future Falcons campaign and mailing, so, you know, hopefully, parents in grades five through eight are getting these, these postcards that we're sending out, um, that just sort of give some highlights and descriptions of what things are happening at DHS. We're targeting younger and younger, you know, it used to be you talk to the eighth grade. Well, no, we're going down to elementary school, we're targeting those, those, um, families. With our eighth graders, you know, we, we use the Future Falcons campaign, which is where we're really targeting having kids see themselves at Danvers High School. And a lot of that has to do with interacting with the current kids of Danvers High School. The kid, the people that are gonna sell this best are the kids themselves. We have, um, you know, the Find Your Success campaign, which really is about emphasizing that you can come to Danvers High School and individualize what you want to get out of it. So, you know, we're not gonna lock you into one program, we're not gonna tell you you have to focus on one thing. We give you flexibility, if you do want to focus in and go with one career path or go with one topic, we can do that too. But we have a lot of flexibility that I'm really proud of and I think a lot of kids like. Um, this, this winter, um, I'm gonna visit all five elementary packs and just spend a little time with the five packs and make sure that there's an open dialogue there. If you haven't noticed, our social media presence is larger than ever. So Facebook posts, Twitter posts, uh, Instagram, um, we're really trying to get, you know, using images especially to show what happens in this place. And then, you know, a layer below is, I just want to make sure that people know, we are absolutely still dedicated to the notion of transparency. We've spent a lot of time, starting last year, in making sure that the community feels like they can access and understand what we're doing at Danvers High School. We've started, um, a new alumni council that's gonna have its first meeting in January, where I've reached out to any alumnus of Danvers High School. Any age, any generation, to come in and have some conversations and just learn about what's going on here and for us to learn from them. Um, we're working on a young alumni council or, excuse me, a young alumni panel. And our hope is to have kids that are just out of here within the last couple of years interact with our current seniors. Kind of give them, hey, here's what I've learned a year out now. You know, you might want to consider this for your search post-secondary, you might want to think about this class or maybe study a little harder, so. But I think that advice from a recent peer is really helpful. We continue to emphasize consistent communication. Um, I think it's really important that parents know that every Friday in my update, they're gonna get information about things that are going well. And if there was a problem, if there was an issue, what are the trends that we're dealing with, both good and bad, that's, that's a That's, that's a standing item in my weekly update. And then we've um, we've kept our um Culture, Climate, and Transparency Committee, the CCT Committee, which is for any parents at Danvers High School, um where we really engage in some thoughtful conversation about, you know, what's going on at school? What are they hearing as parents? How can we work together? Um, we're gonna actually expose parents to in January, um, Ms. Wormer's mentioned the um Restorative Circles Experience. We're gonna do one at our CCT meeting, so parents can sort of see, like, what's this all about? So that's another committee that we've, you know, we've kept going. Um, so you know, I, I think that the numbers are important. Um, I will say that our data around eighth grade um applicants to Essex Tech is a little different than what Mr. Lander's supported tonight. I have it more at thirty-seven percent of the eighth grade class. I'm sure, you know, at the end of the day, we'll get that final number. We'll know who applied, um, January tenth is their deadline, so we'll know that number. Um, we had a great assembly with the eighth graders, where we went down and visited with them, we brought all our students. Um, and we've also, this year, one last piece, and I'll end with this. Um, any parent, but especially eighth grade parents, are invited to come up for a tour with their child or on their own. Um, we're happy to bring them around during the school day, after school, but the doors are open. I, I would really encourage parents to, who are looking at different options, do your homework, but please include us in that homework. Give us the chance to give you all the information, and then certainly, we ultimately support families in doing what's right for their kids. We would never disagree with any family in terms of, you know, what they're doing. So that is the review of the, the survey data, and and you know, I'm certainly committed to doing that process every single year. I think it's really valuable for us as a school. So I look forward to sending that out again in June to our, to our families once their decisions are finalized. So that is the review of the survey data that we did last year.
Questions?
No, um, thank you for pulling this all together and for the transparency. Um, I know a lot of people come, why, you know, why don't people come? Why don't we have more enrollment? Fact of the matter is, the data we have, we're using it, and we're coming up with steps to move forward. So I think that's the main thing we should focus on, what we have, we're doing what we need to do to continue to get more kids want to come here. So thank you for all that work.
Yeah, Adam, thanks, thanks for putting that together. I, I um, you know, I took a look at this a little, a little bit, dug into it. I, I think the people that are looking to become a, a, you know, a plumber uh upon graduation, like, we're not gonna be able to compete with those people, right? So I, I think those are, those people are already gone. What, what I'm thinking about is, I, I don't think this happens in eighth grade. I think this stuff happens in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, right? So how do we get ahead of that? And I have some thoughts about it, and you know, I, I think the second we send a survey to eighth graders on the way out, it's already too late, right? We can't really correct that. So I think it would be good to get in touch with the parents of the middle school, and I'm not suggesting there is a, an issue in the middle school, but I'm suggesting that there's probably something else going on that we don't know about. Um, and there very well might be an issue in the, in the middle school, and if we can get ahead of it, that would be great. So um, you know, are, are there plans to, to, or what I would like to propose is that we survey people, parents of, of students, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, are you, are you looking at other schools? You know, are, are you happy with the current curriculum? Are you happy with, with things going on right now? Because the, you know, I, I look at the, and I, I know I'm gonna get to my roles from, from educators in the room, but I look at the MCAS data that came out, right? The, 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 the one that jumped out was the uh, the middle school data, right? Everything else was pretty, pretty close to being close to benchmark, elementary school, high school. But I look at that middle school data, and I want to dig into it, and I know we're gonna, we're gonna talk about this at the next one, but I, and I know it's just one indicator, but are there people that are not happy with what's going on at the middle school and starting to pull, you know, start to, to plant that seed about pulling their kids out earlier? So I think we really need to get ahead of that a little bit more, so I.
Yeah, I, I would be happy to expand, you know, certainly any survey-taking approaches to, to all the middle school families. Um, and the timing of it, you know, we can do different surveys at different times, I think, for different reasons.
Yep.
Um, and I think that, that, you know, I, I think that would be great to not only understand their thinking, but also understand what are families' metrics for an effective school system?
Totally.
And, and maybe MCAS is one of those numbers?
Yeah.
I can tell you, as a, a lifelong middle school educator, it's, it's usually not the one that most parents bring up first, but I think um, I think there's valuable insight to gain from our families, and I think more than ever, um, as a, as a school system, we're, we're very open and committed to hearing from our parents and, and working with them. So I think I'm happy to, to look at like different checkpoints for different.
Yeah.
Different parents as well. We'd be, that's easy to do, and I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, that, that would just be my thing, is that I think we need to just get ahead of it a little bit more before it's too late, and these kids are already at St. John's or, or whatever, so.
Absolutely.
I would like to hear from Mr. Norton and, and hear more from him in terms of the, the culture at the middle school, because I, I want to echo a lot of what Josh is saying in terms of, there's something, what's happening at sixth, seventh, and eighth, that these kids are, or their families are responding to a survey that they're not feeling safe or supported in, in the high school environment. And that's what I'd like to uncover. Like, why is that before they even step foot into this school? Do they already feel like that? And I think, Adam, you've done a lot. This is not your cross to bear also. Like, I feel like, you know, you're, we shouldn't look to you to solve for this. We need to come together as a, a community to figure this out, and whether or not that's, you know, getting support from the middle school in terms of, of digging deeper into it. I know we had the pair data um from the survey from last year, and I think it went out again this year, but like, if we could review the trends and how students are feeling, where the drop-off is, what's happening there, um, that's driving some of these kids. And I do agree, I think that there are now multiple secondary choices. I mean, we live in a community where we can send, easily send our child to five different schools, right? Like, that's, it's easy for us to do that. Um, so you know, again, I think this is something I think we need to come together to, to solve for, and it's not just for Adam to figure out.
I do think there's, I, I agree, and I think there's some opportunity for more six-to-12 alignment, too.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, there's opportunity to um have there be really a programmatic feel as a secondary, um, you know, a secondary level, you know, and, and, you know, there's obviously some physical distance between the schools, but I think there's still some opportunities there to start to work on, you know, more alignment and more, um, more contact, and even just through like the student groups working with younger.
Yep.
I think all that can contribute to a feeling of, I'm kind of locked into DPS.
Well, right, with the sports and music, right? Don't, don't, like, some eighth graders play on a JV team, or some of the music students play and participate in the band, like, can we find more ways to do that? Or is there more opportunities for us to open that up for those students?
Absolutely. I think, I think the band um provides a really good um model for how we can sort of lock kids into an experience with Danvers High students and programs sooner, and then it pays off. So that's, I think that's a good one to look at. We're down to, into seventh grade with kids that play in the marching band. And so, you know, I think that's a good way to look at what are other, other connections, and, and so I think that's a good place to start.
I'm just gonna say it out loud. I mean, when you look at the numbers and how they're trending, and you talk about creating a linear program between the two schools, I mean, I just go back to look at some other communities, do some analysis, and what are the pluses and minuses of having a high school, middle school combination? Because as the high school population drops, and you, you're gonna have a, a lot of space left in the building, is it attractive to have seventh and eighth graders directly within the school? So they're making a choice to leave as opposed to making a choice at eighth grade to either stay or go? If they're already in the building, that may be a consideration, where they get to experience the inverse high school before they decide to leave. And I'm not, I'm not making that as a policy, I'm just saying that as a, something as a town that we may have to consider, especially from a budget perspective, if the population keeps shrinking, and we have space in the high schools, and we have to create some.
So I, I just want to be clear that there are no empty classrooms in this building. There are no, you know, I, I understand that enrollment, you know, if you just look at our, it's been over a thousand seven hundred, but I just want the public to know, there are no empty spaces in this, in this, you know, there's no empty classrooms in this building.
Right, but you're looking at a smaller student teacher ratio, and, and in some instances, that's a good thing, but you know.
But it's also space for all the, the programs and the courses that exist. So I, I just, I don't want people to feel like there's empty rooms in this building. There's not, but I.
No, no, I appreciate the clarification. This isn't like, let's do this. This is, why don't we look at other communities that do that? And it may be a potential way to mitigate some of those.
Yeah, I, I think there's lots of ways to sort of cross-connect six through eight with nine through twelve, you know, and whether that's a, a physical connection, as you're kind of talking about, or is it a programmatic connection? Like, I think there's lots of ways, and I think if we do deeper survey data on those current, you know, maybe five through seven families, grades five through seven, and we get at what are the things you're thinking about or concerned about, then we can sort of look at either what adjustments do we need, or, or what information do we need to share more effectively? So I think there's like lots of different ways to um, to make those, you know, to make those connections.
I would suggest that we leverage our advocates, too, because there are families who are very happy here. Um, you know, I've spoken to a few families with freshmen, students, and it's like, they're whispering to me about how happy they are, because they just feel like the narrative is negativity. And I think we need to identify those families and those students that are having a positive experience here, and like, let's try to keep continuously share their stories.
Yeah, I, I would a hundred percent agree, and again, I, I, you know, the doors are open. I would, I would challenge anybody that has doubts or has concerns, I would ask them to come in and spend a little time with us so that they can, you know, I feel like they get an accurate um sense of what we're doing here. Um, so I.
Yeah, I think the end I need to remember is that for the last, over a year, we have not had, well, a little more than a year, like, stable leadership at central office. We've had interim, and Mary has done a great job, and, but at the end of the day, the next person who comes in really needs to be like, how can I sell this district? Like, why should everyone enroll and not? Because we look always at Adam to do this, like, why should, why should we stay here? So it needs to, that person needs to be able to sell Danvers Public Schools also.
I also think as we go into the budget season, we have to think about public relations, too, and having a consultant work with us. I, many school districts have it. Essex Tech has a big company working with them and does a lot of that promotion. So I feel like that would be like, if I had more money in my budget, that would have been one thing I would have done, um, starting, you know, once I took Cayman on over the summer. Was, it, really, I actually explored it and have done research on it and have, and have talked to, you know, the town manager about doing that. So I think that that's an important part. I do have to commend Adam and his team as, as really doing their work. They've already started that turnaround, that we're not waiting for the next leader. We're doing the work ourselves, and we, um, you know, we might not be able to get it out there as fast as we can, because we're on a skeleton crew right now, but we're, we're working hard to get that out there.
Yeah, no, and I think that you, you're, you kind of hit the nail on the head with that, is, is we can't wait for the next leader, because, you know, July, you know, there's, there's no time, so that's, it's already too late at that point. And, and I would tell, say, Adam, after the last meeting, I did follow all the places on social media, and it's, you guys are doing a great job. The social media presence is great, so it's, um, I would a hundred percent agree with that.
Yeah, I'd commend, so Jesse Nacella, who works in my office, is the, I do, I do the Twitter, I want to take credit for that, but she handles all the other accounts, so she does a really awesome job with integrating the photos and.
Yeah, it's been great.
Making sure that um, the story's being told, so. Thank you.
Yeah, it's clear to me that, well, first of all, thanks for the data. I think um, anybody can look at this and understand where the pressure points are. Uh, and uh, it's obvious to me what the different ways you're trying to go after this. I'm sure there are other ways, and, and, you know, we'll have more creativity as time goes on, but um, it's obvious to me you're being as proactive as possible, um, trying to sell the community on what is a really great high school. And people, yeah, the last couple of years created some perception problems. Um, and you know, some legitimate, some probably overblown a little bit. Um, but the fact is, we recognize what needs to be done, and we're working on them. And uh, so I appreciate that, Adam. Thank you. All right, uh, new business.
All right, so um, under new business, um, we do have that budget policy update uh from the town that you requested last month that we didn't have, but we do, we have gotten it. Uh, the town manager presented this, um, his budget priorities um to the select board last Tuesday, and um, these are, it's a two-page document, but the important part of this are the three budget goals that um they have for this next fiscal year. Um, and in these three, uh, number two is our, a goal that pertains directly to the to the school committee and the school budget. So um, this is a highlighting um ongoing challenges that we've been facing with out-of-district um placements and the, the correlated transportation costs that go along with this. Overall, our budget is in really good shape, um, with, we have cost savings and a number of the line items, but however, our special education um costs continue to challenge it. Um, this challenge is not exclusive to the Danvers Public Schools, um, our schools, many school districts around. When I am out at the um school committee or the superintendent's meetings that we have once a month, it's, it, special ed is the topic on the table every single time we're meeting. There's rarely another topic other than special education, um, and the costs that's being associated with it, um, because increases have come due to inflation. So um, so the Mass Association of School Superintendents, as well as on the town side, the town manager side, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, um, they all have legislative agendas that are focused on working on special education containing and, and solving the challenges that are, we, all districts are facing with special education costs. So that's a good news. I mean, the, the, the problem is systemic, and it has to be solved in a statewide, you know, beyond just individual school districts. Um, I think both organizations are really focused on um, look, studying Chapter Seventy-One B. This is uh, this, the law that, uh, that really uh defines special education and talks about its funding. And this um chapter was enacted back when, back in nineteen seventy-two, which is fifty years ago, so it's a fifty-year anniversary, and the funding formula really has not caught up to modern times. So again, the statewide approach is gonna be important, but we also need to think about how we do that in our own school district. So what is the impact on our school budget? At this point in the fiscal year, we're on budget, but know that our projected, through our projected costs in special education, um, specifically the out-of-district tuition and the transportation costs, will challenge our budget this spring. Um, we currently have solutions to these challenges. We're working with the town on further work towards long-term solutions, um, such as strengthening in-district programming to educate our uh media students in our schools. Um, at this time, we've projected uh the challenges in the budget uh report that you'll be seeing later on tonight, um, but we haven't quite reflected the savings, where we have savings in that line, and that will be coming in months to see. So the initial report that you get tonight is gonna just show our budget with what we're projecting as the challenges in, in the special education budget. So some details about this budget. Um, so last school year, we saw an overage of six hundred thousand dollars, which the town helped us solve. So they gave us um money to address those problems in our last fiscal year budget. They also gave us money to create a special education stabilization fund um to use when we're seeing challenges. Um, but as we were working with that last year, we were also seeing an increase in students going out of districts. So from January um through June of twenty twenty-two, we saw fourteen students uh having to be placed outside the Danvers Public Schools for, to be educated, to be get educated. And again, these are all in response to um COVID-related uh outcomes, like the students that uh really had difficulty through COVID are students that we're seeing and that we're needing to place out of district. So um, moving into the school year, we're aware of the challenges we had coming in. We worked uh really hard to keep students in our district um in, in the months, in the first initial months, but we faced two immediate challenges when we were doing this. Um, one was students moving into um the district over the summer who were already placed in specialized programs. So when that happens, we have to assume that cost and continue paying for the out-of-district placement. And the second is the impact that some of our youngest learners have had um, uh, in our schools due to their inability to um kind of participate in a structured learning environment, that they have never been in a structured learning environment, and really through their behaviors communicating that they weren't gonna be easily transitioned into, into that environment. So um, those were our, our challenges at the beginning of the school year, and since of the school year. And since then, since September, we've seen nine additional students go out. So with that though, we also have seen some, some students coming back into the Danvers Public Schools or moving out. So we have had some fluctuation in our numbers. In the end, we have about 69 students that are out of district place at this current time. We're projecting that the impact of these unanticipated placements will be about $1.4 million to our programming budget. And that is the programming side because we pay for those for the tuitions, but we still have yet to get the kids to their placements. So we also have an additional expense of $900,000 that was unanticipated in transportation costs. Now, the, this, this, the, the challenge in this, especially on the transportation side, is not only just, you know, fuel costs, but is lack of competition. So there's only one major league, major transportation company that we can go to. So there is no, no competition with rates. So what you, when you call to get transportation services, you get what you get and you have to take the price that they give you. So that is something that we've been working on. And Pam Ames, who's our secretary today at the school committee, has been working that. She's our transportation coordinator and really understands those stressors. So I think we, our focus when working with the town is really not only is to, to kind of fix, and we have solutions on how to cover this, the overage that we are, we're projecting in our budget. And so that's not going to be a problem for our, this fiscal year. But as the fiscal years move on, the challenges and, and if this, these out of district placements continue in this rate, we are going to see challenges in that budget. So what do we need to do? We need to really focus on building, strengthening our in district program. Those programs were made a little bit weaker over COVID. That was, was difficult for us to maintain some of those programs through COVID and also maintain the staffing that we need, the specialized staffing we need in those programs. So that's the challenges that we've been facing. But what we've been finding is that we've been working well with our in district special education teachers and having them shift to cover some of these programs and provide the training and resources that they need to make these programs stronger. And we're working, also, we have three outside consultants working with Lynn O'Neal and the special education teachers to really strengthen the programs in the language-based learning classrooms, in the autism, autism classrooms, and then in our therapeutic programs. So having these outside experts who, you know, work with, you know, advocates and, and private schools on the other side, they're helping us look, really take a deep look at our programs and tell us what we need to improve them so that we're a strong program and we're able to withstand any kind of situation where students want to be placed out of district. We can show that our program is equal to what they're going to go get out in a special, in a specialized program. So those are our goals. The town manager is also committed to, to building those programs. He knows that's the long-term fix and is really strongly advocating that we do that. So it was, when we did meet with him, it was a great meeting. We were thinking a lot alike. So we're looking forward to continuing to meet with him and, and work on this, these challenges together.
Great. So first, a little housekeeping has the, typically in the past, when we were given this document, you as a school committee were asked not to vote on it, but to provide comment. And usually it would be, you know, tell the town manager and the selectmen, you know, we think this makes sense from our perspective. Have they already passed this or is this?
I think it's still in draft form.
Okay. So the first thing I'd like to do is then to ask the school committee, having read this, any questions or concerns? Or does this make sense so that we can let the selectmen know, yeah, we're on board with the basic concepts here?
It makes sense, but it does tell me that really soon, we're going to need more money from the select board. We're going to need more money in our budget. Well, let me ask just Lynn, if we were to build any of these in district programs, how much money are we talking about? Not what we would save. I know we'd save a lot, but what would we need? With fidelity to create, to not just like, you know?
We actually have these programs in our.
Oh, I know we do. But I mean, like, I mean, like, yeah, to be able to, to the best that they could be.
So as Mary said, we do have programs already in place in, in our elementary schools. We have a language-based program. We have a therapeutic learning program. We have an autism spectrum program. We are then, we bring those programs through the middle school and the high school. Needs change for kids as they get into middle school and into high school. It's the retaining the staff that is an absolute necessity. We need skilled staff. We need adequate space and we need resources that are particular to the disability category that those programs serve. So to put a number on that, I'm not sure, but those are the, those are the foundational pieces that are, that must be in place in order for our successful program to happen.
We talked like a million? Just wonder. I mean, no, because like, I think that this is like, I think between this and then we know when the S R funds run out, not just with special ed, like we're going to have, we're going to be in a really bad situation because a lot, we might not be able to sustain the resources that we have. And I think that would be very detrimental to all the children and staff that, in Danvers. So I, to ask what could be as a select board, we, there cannot be any budget cuts if anything that needs to be increased over the years. Because we're really, I mean, to be honest, like, we don't even have the resource, we don't even have the resources that we should have in the town of Danvers for our students.
Let's clarify one thing. It's not the select board. It's really the finance committee and ultimately town meeting.
Those people, then, yeah.
Select board certainly works. It's really town meeting that ultimately has to make that final vote.
Okay. That's just something to keep in mind.
I, I'm, I think it would be very difficult, I don't want to speak for Lynn, but to put a number on a program that you don't, it would kind of depend on the program, what you're trying to accomplish, how many kids you're going to be serving. So I think it would be difficult to like, put a number on what it would cost now.
Well, no, what I'm saying is obviously we would be saving $2.3 million, but it's not like the district could just start it tomorrow, you know, like we're still looking at, we'd need more money than we already have in our budget to be able to create it. So it's just, I think, like, I mean, on a different, between this and then just like our middle management and like instructional coaches, like we do not have the resources we need in this school, in this district. Like, that's a whole other issue. And Lynn does not have the special ed resources she needs. And that's been ongoing before Lynn even got here.
I mean, it would be very difficult to give a number, but qualified teacher, I mean, our, our contract is a great contract and it, so it's definitely the salary. It is definitely the number of power professionals needed to offset the ratio in a classroom. So that's, you know, times whatever their yearly salary would be. And most importantly, it's, we have really, we, we actually have, in the town of Danvers, we have wonderfully gifted special education teachers currently. It's the training that they need now to really hone those skills and be the expert. I have found that, you know, we, in, in the world of student services, there was sort of a gap around the training and specialized programs. But we're, we've started that momentum. We've used a lot of the grant funds to train current staff on methodology that is necessary for our special education students. That needs to continue. I am, and Mary and I had lots of creative conversations about when those grants run out, how do we continue that momentum? Because that needs to happen. You know, and when staff, when we do have, again, we're so lucky. We have, we have so many staff members who are veteran and who are, you know, continue to commit each year to Danvers Public Schools. But we have other staff members who leave after you, you know, you put somebody through a Wilson certification program at X number of thousands of dollars and then they go to a different school, school district. So we start again because that's a necessary component to something like a language-based program. And so, you know, that's, that's, that's how it goes. So.
I was going to say, we, we've secured recently more funding for social emotional learning off of another, a competitive grant from the Department of Ed, which allows me to shift some of our programming that we were using for some of our social emotional learning programs over to the grant. So now the programming money's freed up. So that's when like Lynn and I are able to send more teachers out to be trained in these, and, you know, and strengthen up the programs that we have with the teachers.
And the wonderful thing is, is that I feel so fortunate because the curriculum office and the student services office are aligned and are thinking about what our teachers need. And so that conversation has been rich and robust and, you know, creative with the planning. And so that's exciting. It's just, you know, the traction so that then you see the impact and the outcome. And it takes a little bit to get there. So.
When does the S R funds run out? We have one more year?
Yeah, one more year. So FY '24.
Other comments? I want to put some context around a lot of what we talked about. Gabe and I had the chance to meet with Mary and Lynn and Pam and talk about the, the overall situation here. So first of all, context wise, yes, we have a shortage in terms of the cost. Let us say we have, we have excess costs in special ed than we thought we'd have. Having said that, what you'll see over time is that we're going to be able to absorb those costs because of other savings that occurred, including central office staffing and all those things. So ultimately, we'll be able to handle it this year. But people need to, I guess, need to understand a couple of things. Number one, there's a lot of things we don't control in the special ed world. One is the, the students who come to us needing services or develop the need for services when they're in the school or move into the district. We have both a legal and more importantly, a moral obligation to provide the appropriate education in the least restrictive environment for those students. So there's that. We don't really have much control over what, or any control really, over what outside private schools charge. And my understanding is they're going to get an increase of potentially, what, 14% or thereabouts this year?
Yeah, that's the increase. There's, you know, we've, we've all reached out to our state legislatures towards, to ask them to consider like other ways of funding that instead of through increases to the school district. Because that result, if there's a 14% increase on the tuitions at private schools, it's going to result in a 1.25% increase in our budget on just special education costs, not on our step in scale of our teachers and, and personnel. So.
Then you have to take into account, so, so the obvious answer is yes, we need to develop more programming. But that is going to require an upfront investment, as Robin has pointed out. And not necessarily, we don't know how much, but the point is to do it right. You can't just throw a program together. You have to have a critical number of students who have the same general need. And then you have to build a program around that. So that's going to be a challenge in terms of staffing and salary and all, but we have to do it right, too. The other thing that's important to know is, yeah, we have really seen an increase in behavioral outplacements among younger and younger students and more students since COVID. And by the way, it's not just us. This is a problem with school districts around the state and the country, that the impact of, of COVID on families, on students, on their mental health and their ability to integrate into, into a school environment has really been harmed and hindered. And it's just a reality that that's driving costs up. This, not to blame or vilify any child or any family or any group of people, it's the reality that we face. It's the hangover from COVID and it's a challenge that we face throughout the country. So I think what the, what we're trying to tell the town here is, okay, this year, we're going to be able to work with this and make it work. But as you've all pointed out, as we get further on, if the trends continue, we're in a perfect storm here, even in terms of hiring staff or hiring bus drivers. It is, it is a very difficult time for every business, including school systems in terms of the economic challenges that we face. And the best we can do is promise that we're going to try and address those, you know, proactively, the best that we can. And I know, as I say, from talking with Lynn and Mary and, and Pam, yeah, we're looking at, you know, in district programming, trying to increase our, our abilities and our programming. It's the one way that will help us. And be creative in terms of the use of consortiums and anything that we can do, partnering with other communities where we can. There are a lot of creative ideas out there and we'll do our best to take advantage of all of them. Let me turn back just to this budget policy. So can we report to the selectmen that we are satisfied with the budget policy?
Yep, I have no objection.
All right. If you need to vote, but a consensus is good. All right. So thank you. And we'll continue to report an update on this as, as time goes on. So you can report to the selectmen that, you know, we had our view and discussion. And I think we appreciate them recognizing and the town manager recognizing the priority involving special ed that is number two on the list. And clearly, he sees and they see the issue as well, and we appreciate that.
Actually, I do have one question. I'm sorry. And I don't know, maybe I missed it. With the additional apartments being built in downtown Danvers, is there any projection or is there any, anything in here about the student population or how that's going to affect school budgets or anything like that? I guess is more my question in terms of managing population sizes. And is that real, is that, should that be a consideration, I guess?
And taxes.
And, yeah, I mean, I guess that's just, again, it might not be in here. And I don't know if it, this is even the place to put it, but I guess it's just something that I've been hearing from families.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting question. Historically, apartments don't tend to result in a large, in the past, did not tend to result in large increases.
Okay.
You know, but even when Avalon, now it's called something else, when Avalon went into the old state hospital, we saw an increase, but it wasn't.
Substantial.
It wasn't substantial enough to, you know, require a new school or anything like that. But now that how home prices are much higher than they were, it's possible that, you know, down the line, maybe not in this budget, but maybe in next year's budget, there, we'd have to see what the numbers look like. Maybe there would be concerns about students coming in.
There is an influx in other communities and apartments because of the prices of the housing market. Yeah. So.
Yeah. Well, maybe we can suggest to the selectmen and to town manager that, you know, if they wanted to add something under long-term goals, maybe it's considering the impact of any additional housing units on school budget and other services. I think they've kind of alluded to that under bullet point number two, but maybe they want to put something a little more specific. But that would be our only suggestion. All right. Can I make, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mary.
Oh, no.
Okay. I'm going to make a suggestion on the, on the agenda when it comes to talking about the interim superintendent evaluation. We have the rubric, we have the priority indicators. In view of the hour, I'm wondering if we might move that to the January agenda because frankly, trying to, if we're going to evaluate Mary's performance, it really has to be from June 30th, July 1st onward. So maybe we don't want to attack that until February or March anyway, when we're sort of through the superintendent search. So unless anyone has a serious problem with that, I'd like to move it to the next agenda.
You know, I was just going to say, I mean, I know technically as an interim, we don't have to evaluate her at all. So that's just something to think about. I think that this rubric is really, really heavy. So in, when or if we decide to give her feedback, I think we really need to decide what are the indicators we want to give feedback on. Because this is very, very heavy and for her to collect all this is like months.
All right. So let's plan on having that discussion in January. That'll set us up good. All right. Order of business. So we have the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Are there, this includes fundraising requests, field trip requests, the personnel memo. I don't think we have any homeschool requests on this one, right? So does anyone have any individual question on anything within the items contained on the consent agenda?
No.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, carries. All right. We have the budget report. Mary?
Yes, I'm going to call Pam from up to report. I think I gave the report earlier and while we were looking at the priorities of the district. So I think when you look at that report, you will see the challenges that we talked about in special education to, out of district tuitions and in transportation. So if you have any questions, Pam with us.
Good evening, Pam. You had a lot more this year than you anticipated, huh?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to keep up with, with it all. No, I mean, the, the budget, as Mary indicated earlier, is in good shape in many, many ways. It's, you know, it's sort of what we expect at this time of the year. There are certain things that are a little bit over, but we are able to account for them in other places in the budget, with the exception being the unanticipated overages in the projections for the tuitions and the transportation. But other than that, I'm, I'm feeling pretty comfortable with where we are right now and where we see ourselves going. And we do have a plan to, to identify where some of those savings are that will help offset the, the deficit that we are anticipating.
Questions for Pam?
Any questions on the report?
I would just say the, I know you shared with us, the town's working closely with you whenever possible to help out with, with what you're doing and the challenges we face. So we do. So we do appreciate that, too.
Oh, I, I very, very much appreciate the support that I've gotten from Town Hall, the town manager, the accounting office, the finance director, Rodney has been, they've all been very supportive and helpful when I have questions or need any sort of assistance or reassurance, so I very much appreciate that.
Thank them and thank you for what you're doing, Pam. We know it's a challenge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes.
The secretary moves to approve and release the minutes from the November 14th, 2022 regular meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, cares. Communications.
Yes, you'll see attached to your agenda is the 21, 22 Northeast Consortium Annual Report. And they are, that report's interesting. If you're interested in what our consortium, and that's where we do a lot of our out-of-district placements, is that's the first place we look to because we're a member of that and our, our, the rates are lower at that place, at that school for, or the schools for our students to attend. Because we, we join together with lots of area school districts to support it. So in that report, you'd see page seven and eight, they have some data on the students that they serve. Pages nine through 16 will have descriptions of each school and the education program that they provide. On page 19, they have comparison of their daily rate versus the private school daily rate, which that, you know, was very interesting to me to see that. So when we, you know, if we cannot place them at the consortium, we have to place them at schools, other schools like that. So we have to, you know, we look at, at those daily rates as well, as well as the programming and the individual student and their needs when we're looking at placing them. And then page 20 is kind of like their, their strategic plan and their goals for the consortium. So, and then, then page 26 wraps up the report with their finances. So those, that's kind of a quick overview of that report, but it was interesting from, for me at least, when I was up in the meeting and looking it over. So you might take a few minutes yourselves and.
Thank you. Legislation, the legislative session will start when new members are sworn in, in January. I think that our representative and senator are certainly aware of the challenges within all of the communities and their districts in terms of costs and the over, the overlay from the COVID situation. So I know we'll be having more discussions with them. And one question that has to come up is, number one, how are we, how is the state going to handle funding for schools? You know, the, I'm sorry, outplacement schools, special education schools in terms of, you know, school, public schools being able to absorb those budget increases? And secondly, what can the state do in general in terms of the circuit breaker to, you know, assist public schools in dealing with the increased special education costs? So I'm sure those two items will be high on the agenda and we'll certainly be communicating with our representatives on that. Subcommittee liaison reports. Curriculum and Equity, I don't think we've had a meeting recently, or have we?
January, and we're reviewing them, casted during that time break.
Okay. Policy, we have definitely not had a policy meeting.
But we can now that, you know, as we had a presentation today asking about facilities, I think that was the conversation we had is to look at the facility policy.
Love that. Let's set that up and perhaps we can, you know, talk to the town, too. Cause I think, Gabe, you pointed out that at one point that the town has some control over the school buildings, even though they are, technically, it's the town that maintains them. And I think that, in thinking about it, that may be correct because there was a point where I want to say, one of the school buildings was not being used and the school committee had to take a vote. Now, this is 10 years ago, had to take a vote to turn it back over to the town. So we may have the ability to have some control over things like rentals and community use, and we'll look into that. Deep.
Deep, we're meeting on Wednesday. Mary Beth's here if she wants to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Beth.
She can be our liaison.
Well, actually, who is our liaison? That, that is the question. So, and I only ask that because I'm not necessarily coming to every single meeting to update on Deep. And over the years, there's always been a liaison to Deep and we would love to have someone attend our monthly meeting. But with that being said, I will update that we are having a meeting this Wednesday. It is at 8:00 AM. I know it's hard, people work, we all work, but even if people want to rotate, we would love to have someone represent the school committee. The schools are represented, Mary comes, principal at Highlands, John comes, Rita comes. But I also want to say thank you to the schools for supporting the holiday festival that happened last weekend. We had performances from the middle school chorus. They were wonderful. We were supposed to have the band, but because it rained, they couldn't perform because they couldn't get their instruments wet. We did have, same thing with DHS chorus. We had to move everything inside, so times changed, but they were committed to it, they just couldn't do it. But we do thank them for wanting to participate. We had close to 20 student volunteers between the middle school and high school and could not have done this event without them. I want to thank them publicly here and there, some of the teachers were there that advised them, but I will say they were the most professional students, middle school and high school. They were there all day, they did not complain. They wanted to know what they could do, how much more they could do, that was to a point where didn't have a lot at a certain point because I had so many volunteers. So I just want to let you know that they represented Danvers Public Schools excellent. I told them that and kudos to them for, for just being active volunteers in the community. So, and we're still working on the teacher grants. There's a committee that is going through them. We had quite a bit in applicants this year and we probably are going to have to not fund some of them because our wine tasting did not bring in as much money as we had hoped. So unfortunately, the first round, and I say first round because we may have to only fund maybe half and then see what our spring fundraiser takes in to maybe support the rest. So that's kind of where we are. So hopefully in January or February, we'll be able to announce to the school committee what the grants were that we're going to be able to find. So, any questions?
Before you go, I'm going to try and do something about the liaison piece for you. When are the, the meetings are once a month?
Yep.
7:30 in the morning?
No.
No?
8:00 AM.
8 o'clock in the morning, okay.
8:00 AM, Brookline Bank on High Street. Try to really have it done because we all do work. We try to be out by somewhere between the 8:30 quarter and 9:00 timeframe.
Okay.
And, you know, it's very important because, again, this is something we help support the schools financially and with other things. Like in January, we'll be doing the HRMS spelling bee. We'll host that and sponsor that again here, and that's going to be January 26th here at the high school. So I guess my point is, without the support of the community, we can't do it with four people.
Yep.
And I know people are like, oh, I want to help or I, you know, wish I could be there and this and that. If people don't start stepping up, things like this will die. And I hate to say that, but it's the truth because, again, we're, we're parents that have been in this district since our kids were in kindergarten and now they're gone. And why am I still involved? Well, because it's my community and I care. And I don't want to let something that I helped build fall apart. But I've done, I've done things. I've gone to PACs, I've done cable shows, I've done a lot. I do the community events. Everyone loves it, it's great. And I get it, I get it, we're all busy, but you can make time for things if you really truly want to. And I'm an example of that because I work full-time, I have children, I have a lot of other things. But, and I'm not, and I'm saying this for the community people, you know, if you like it, help support it. If you don't, that's okay. There can be someone else, other things, but we, you know, we do need help. And I hate to be like pleading with the community, but we do need help. So that's just my story tonight. Happy holidays, everyone.
You too, Mary Beth.
And thank you for everything that you do.
We'll get you, we'll get your liaison. All right. Back to the agenda.
So Danvers cares.
Danvers cares.
So we had a meeting the first Monday of the month and we had a report from Mary Lou Hardy, who is a community and benefits and relations manager at the Addison Gilbert and Beverly Hospital. She gave us a report on the community health trends, so that worked. We looked at that, her data and her trends versus what we found in our student data that we've been analyzing in October and November. And then at the end of the meeting, we voted on actions to take in, in each of the three areas under substance abuse prevention, around bullying prevention and in mental health. So we're gonna, we have specific actions to take and we're going to start to implement them starting the start of the new year.
Okay. And CPAC.
We don't have anything new, right? Do we? Oh, okay.
Meeting coming up in January. She has a meeting coming up. And we have also have a tiered focus monitoring review from the Department of Ed for special education and civil rights. So there'll be meetings with those parents as well.
So that's what I just wanted to remind people that we, as part of the next CPAC meeting, which the date has not been set, there will be a parent component that the Department of Education will come and piggyback on so that they can explain to the parent community what the tiered focus monitoring is all about. So just keep your eyes open for the CPAC meeting coming in mid to late January.
Great. And Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee, I think I mentioned last time, the November meeting was canceled, but the December meeting is this Thursday. And hopefully, I think the big topic or one of the big topics of discussion is bound to be the Martin Luther King event in January. We're about a month away, give or take. And I'm sure that the subcommittee is working diligently and I know that Mary, you and your team and Adam are working on support for that, that event, which is always a great event.
Yeah, we met last, last Friday and came up with our action steps. We're all ready to go. So good with that. And then I'm excited that the Next Gen students that were presented here tonight will be presenting at the meeting on Thursday.
Oh, great, great, that's great. All right, so that concludes our agenda for this evening. Does anybody else have anything? Nope. Our next meeting is January 9th here at 7 o'clock. We wish everybody in the community happy holidays, however you celebrate, have a wonderful and safe time with your families and let's all hope we have a great new year and we'll see you all in January. Thank you.
We have a motion to adjourn.
There you go, is there a second?
Second.
And all right, no discussion, no, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's a vote. Good night, Danvers.